Okay, we are going to proceed with our special town meeting as the first to order of business tonight. We're not continuing initially our annual town meeting. And when we adjourn the special town meeting, we will pick up our business on the annual town meeting. And as I say, the meeting will come to order, and as our tradition, we open every meeting, and this is a new special town meeting, with a pledge allegiance to the flag. So please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Having been advised by the town clerk that a majority of town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business. Now, before proceeding with the meeting, I want to remind the members that I have read all of our rules of order just last evening pertinent to our annual town meeting, and those rules of order will be the conduct of this meeting as well. Consequently, we will move, and I want to point you all, we are working from this special town meeting warrant. I hope you all have that. I heard some no's. I believe we do have copies outside. By the time you return, Mr. Crookshank, we'll probably finish the business. Maybe I'll wait a minute. Mr. Morash told me a joke before the meeting that I could use to fill eartime. I am not going to use the joke Mr. Morash told me. Okay, let's get started. Article one. To see what sum of money the town will vote to expend to supplement the appropriation of Public Works General under Article 21 of the May 2004 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of removal of snow and ice for the 12-month period beginning July 1, 2004, and to act on anything related thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and it is recommended that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $193,877 to Public Works General for this purpose, and to meet said appropriation, the amount of $193,877 be appropriated from funds certified by the Department of Revenue as free cash. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No? It's unanimous. Now, I'll entertain, that is our only article of business under the special town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Crookshank, for those copies. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Let's move. Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No? We are adjourned. I'll call our annual town meeting to order. Having been advised by the town clerk that we have a quorum of town meeting members, I announce that we can conduct our business. Last evening, just as a reminder to really follow along tonight, you're going to need the sheet that talks about the articles that we're going to consider this week versus the articles we had voted to consider next week, beginning Monday. Last evening, we left off, had finished voting on Article 47, which means we want to move to Article 48.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes?
Do you consider a motion of Article 47?
Mr. Duffy, can you come to a microphone, identify yourself, and make a motion?
Mr. Moderator, Ed Duffy from Precinct 7, town meeting member, member of the planning board. Mr. Moderator, I move reconsideration of Article 47.
Is that motion seconded?
Seconded.
Does anyone wish to speak to the motion of reconsideration? Mr. Mullen, you're recognized.
Peter Mullen, Precinct 3. Essentially, the question on this motion is whether or not we're going to reconsider what we did last night. It takes a two-thirds vote to amend the zoning bylaw. The vote didn't carry last night by two votes. I think it was the will of the body, and I'd urge that we vote no on reconsideration, that we move on with the rest of the warrant.
For information to the membership, our rules require that we can, in fact, call for reconsideration within one hour, and that would only require a majority vote of the members. We are within one hour because you do not count the time that you recess, so we have just completed that article. So to reconsider it, the vote would just have to be a majority vote. To reconsider the article. Then we would have to have a discussion on the article, and of course, for that article to pass, it still has a two-thirds majority to pass that article. Ah, interesting question. The question is, does a person who had voted in the negative have to call for reconsideration rather than the affirmative? And the answer to that is no. I believe town council? That's correct. Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion to reconsider the article? Does the warrant committee have a recommendation?
It's procedural, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Dolan, you're recognized. Dr. Dolan?
This is a relatively important article, although, albeit, it doesn't seem to have its place in the town of Milton, but when you talk about drive-in restaurants as opposed to banks, this is a very important issue. And if we have to have a standing vote, I think it's just as important, because this was a very close vote. Only two votes short of, it would have passed in the regular process, but I think it's appropriate that we try again tonight after just missing out last night by two votes. Thank you.
Mr. Wall, you're recognized.
Rick Ward, Precinct 9. I agree with Peter Mullen. For those of us who stayed quite late last night and heard all of the debate, it seems to me this has been thoroughly discussed. It didn't make it, and to chew up the time of the town meeting to spend another hour on this is just not a good process. The fact of the matter is, it didn't get two-thirds vote. I'm sure many who voted against it were moved by the fact that this is essentially a ban on any drive-through restaurants at all. And two-thirds did not feel that it should pass, and I think we ought to leave it where it is and move on to the next article, which will, under the next article, you're also going to have debate on what to do, which is much more practical, sensible approach to it. So I urge that we get on with the business of this town meeting and vote no on reconsideration.
Seeing no one else waiting to wish to speak to this article, all those in favor of the motion to...
Mr. Moderator, we didn't hear the recommendation.
The Senate Warrant Committee Chairman, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a procedural issue, so there's no need for the warrant committee to make a recommendation.
All those in favor of the motion to reconsider say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Motion is defeated. Article 48, which you will find on page 81. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws as follows. To delete the following sentence from Section 3, Subsection C, Paragraph 8, quote, "This Paragraph 8, Subsection C shall expire 24 months after enactment," close quote, and to otherwise act thereon. This is submitted by the planning board, and it will require a two-thirds vote, and there is no recommendation at this time. I recognize the chair of the warrant committee for revised recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The warrant committee recommends that town meeting vote no on Article 48. The warrant committee believes that there should not be an outright ban on food service drive-throughs.
Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized. Chairman of the planning board.
Last February, the planning board, I mean, last February, the article was before the town meeting to prohibit drive-through restaurants in the business zone. The article was amended to provide for two years for the planning board to further study the matter and come up with some possible alternatives. We presented to you last night what we considered to be a reasonable alternative for drive-through restaurants. A number of people have said, "Well, that's not going to work in East Milton Square. You should have done something so that little bank building could have a drive-through." We followed what we thought was our mandate. We came up with standards which are reasonable for drive-throughs. The fact that the business district is so small that it won't support a drive-through illustrates the fact that perhaps we should have more business-owned land in town, but to say that the standards are no good because we don't have any room to apply them, I'm not sure is the right way to approach this question. Given the fact that the town meeting has determined not to impose standards for drive-throughs, the alternative is to allow drive-throughs with no standards, which would be the effect of voting down the prohibition which we are suggesting be made permanent. If there were no standards on drive-throughs, I think that you can rest assured that that little bank building, which has been vacant so long in East Milton, will in fact be converted to a drive-through restaurant. I think you can be assured that traffic on Adams Street will come to a stop at certain hours of the day, and I think that you can be assured that the business district will suffer as a result. The planning board believes that it's very important for the health of the business district, not only in East Milton, but also in Central Avenue and Milton Village, that unrestricted drive-throughs, which will inevitably not be big enough to handle traffic, and will back out into Adams Street, Central Avenue, Elliot Street, Granite Avenue, and is going to make our business district much less viable than it is now. We strongly recommend that you remove the limitation on the prohibition of drive-throughs, which is set to expire next February. Failure to do so will, in fact, in our view, severely and adversely affect the business district.
Mrs. Sheffield, you're recognized.
A year ago, we had the proposal before us to use the old U.S. Trust Company building in East Milton Square as a drive-through restaurant. The people in the neighborhood of East Milton came together and spoke emphatically and unequivocally that this was an inappropriate use of the building, that it would cause more problems to East Milton and the business district than benefits by allowing it to occur. This is one primary business district in Milton. There are only two others, Milton Village and Central Avenue. And I believe that the neighborhoods in each of those areas would be equally adamant that the geography is just not suitable for such a facility in any of those three business districts. With that being said, let's keep it simple, and instead of promulgating a set of regulations that apparently would permit it under certain circumstances where we know that certain circumstances could never be met, let's just say no, and approve the article before us and prohibit drive-through restaurants in the existing business districts of the town of Milton. Thank you.
Mr. Ward, you're recognized.
Rick Ward, Precinct 9. I disagree with my good friend Bob Sheffield. He and I serve on the board at Milton Hospital. I agree with the recommendation of the warrant committee. The fact of the matter is, we can do better than simply throwing up our hands. Nobody wants there to be a drive-through restaurant in that particular bank building, and I find it somewhat offensive, frankly, for the planning board to say, "Oh, my goodness, that's what you're going to get." We can do better than that, folks. I agree with what Peter Mullen said last night, if you remember that. Okay? And I think that probably spurred the warrant committee on it. What did Mr. Mullen say? The fact of the matter is, this doesn't run out until next February. It is well-known there's going to be a special town meeting in the fall. The library needs one. Those who voted against this other article were offended by virtue of the fact you put a 50,000, an acre and a third, or acre and a quarter requirement in there, which was just saying, you know, "You'll buy this, and we will never have one." Well, the town meeting in its wisdom said, "We can do better than that," and I think we can do better than that. The fact of the matter is, if the planning board will take a hard look at this and look at what is in fact practical, it makes no sense to have a total ban on it. I mean, it might be a good thing in some areas. There's new development over here, but, you know, you're never going to have one where you have 50,000 square feet. I'll bet there's not a lot in East Milton Square that meets half that, 25,000 square feet. And if you want to be sure that there won't be one in that bank building, why don't you find out the square footage of the lot in that building and make it a square foot higher? That'll probably be about 13,000 square feet. I don't know. But I say we can do better. I agree with what the warrant committee, and I agree with what Peter Mullen said last night. There's no rush on this. It's till next February, and the will of the town meeting was, "Thank you very much, planning board. We know you're sincere, but this isn't good enough. We ought to have some compromise in between that is not a total ban on such establishments," because they're a good thing. A lot of you, I don't use them, but a lot of you do. You drive through. You get your coffee. And if there's a right place, that might be nice. Why not? Okay? Why be anti-business? Why just say no, a period? And so, I agree with the warrant committee. I think the appropriate vote is no.
You're recognized.
Hi, my name's Jack Boz, Precinct 1. He's a tough act to follow, but I agree with what Mr. Ward just said. I was going to say that, but I'd like to also thank the planning board for their work on the minimum standards, although I think they could have done better. I'm not here to reiterate the hand-slapping that Mr. Ward just gave them, but I would like to really thank, I mean, I know there was a lot of work to compile those minimum standards, but I think that we can come up with something that's workable with this It would be very short-sighted to ban any kind of business like this, and let me put a disclaimer in there. I have nothing to do with any drive-throughs in all of America. And that's all.
Mr. Duffy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Duffy, town meeting member, Precinct 7, member of the planning board. Precinct 7, for those who can't visualize it on the map, is the area of town altogether east of the expressway, right near East Milton Square, half of the side of East Milton Square. I'd like to propose that we just reverse Mr. Ward's idea. Mr. Ward says, "Keep waiting until a future town meeting, perhaps in the fall, and then we can work on this again." We can enact a total ban now with a yes vote and protect the business districts and the people who live in both business districts in the area. We can say, "Vote yes, no," and the ban is in effect. We can reverse the ban at a later date when we have a better plan. That's the way to go about this. And if the moderator will allow our new town planner, Aaron Henry, who's done most of the research on this matter, I think can enlighten us.
Mr. Town Planner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Aaron Henry, and before I get to that, I just want to thank you all for the opportunity you've given me to serve your town. It's a wonderful community, and I've enjoyed the first 18 months of my tenure here immensely. Sorry. I've enjoyed the first 18 months of my tenure here immensely, and I've had the pleasure of meeting many of you, and I hope to meet the ones I haven't met. Researching this article has been about nine months of almost full-time work. I'm a little confused at Article 48 as to why we now seem to be discussing banning it outright when we spent a better part of last night discussing how we thought it could be possible. We went out as directed, did the research, conducted survey, you know, we've talked to anywhere between six and 12 communities about how this drive-throughs work. We have a unique opportunity here to learn from the experience that these other towns are giving back to us about what to do when you're faced with a drive-through. I would strongly encourage you to support this article and vote yes because of what we're hearing from these communities. We do not want to revert back to the as-of-right development potential that we faced a year and a half ago when we first heard about this potential Dunkin' Donuts. We approached all of the articles, actually, not just this one. As I mentioned, we did a survey on every article, at least six to 12 communities for each article. And as I said, I mean, we have a chance here to learn from the mistakes of other communities, and I would just strongly encourage us to vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Mr. Morash, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Morash, Precinct 2. I agree with the warrant committee, and I would urge, I believe, a no vote. A no vote on this is that we are with the warrant committee on this. This gets very confusing. Look around you. Look at the room you're in tonight. This would not be possible if we all said, "No, they said no, let's forget about it." We found a way. We found a way to build this school, to get this room built, to get all these facilities built, because the town told us they wanted a better idea and a better plan. I agree with my friend, Mr. Ward. We do admire the work that's done at the planning board, all the boards in this town. We'd ask you to come back with something a little different. It means a little hard work. We're not afraid of hard work in this town. I look at this room and the people in it, and I know we all worked hard for a lot of things. So I ask you to vote no with the warrant committee on this, and let's get a better plan for our town. Thank you.
Mr. Boz, you're recognized.
Hi, Jack Boz. I'm a little more comfortable over here. I was nervous as heck the first time. By the way, that was my first time I spoke ever at a town meeting in six years. This is my second time. I just don't want anybody to misunderstand what I said. I realize that I kind of had marbles on my mouth. I agree with Mr. Ward. I agree with Mr. Duffy. Conceive that as it may be. I don't think, I grew up in East Milton Square, and, you know, to get right to the chase, a drive-through in the bank would be absolute insanity. You know, I grew up in that square. I hung around the square. I reached manhood, hopefully not in the square, but... The Tony's Balladrome is long gone. But my intent is to put the power back into the police department, the traffic studies, the zoning board, and I am behind them 100% in their analyses of situations such as this. But again, I strongly urge that minimum standards, to blanket across for every community is not applicable in this case. We have, as you all know, some very challenging developments coming up to us, and again, the disclaimer, I have nothing to do with any of these things that are coming up. There's an unusual opportunity to really not be short-sighted, and whatever yes does for us, does it expose us to someone coming in, and as, I forget the term that he used, as-built, or, you know, you can do whatever the heck you want, but my intent and my recommendation to this party, I hope you consider that we will consider to put the power in someone that has the means, the zoning board, the police, the fire, for traffic control and anything else that may be involved in projects like this, to allow them to do their job, not to bureaucratically knock people out of business and say, "All the heck with it," throw their hands up and leave, because there are some viable entities out there, and I won't even bore you with that, you know, that can be had. I mean, we can't shut the doors to someone who has interesting enterprises that they might want to bring to the town.
Mr. Jackson, you're recognized.
Pete Jackson, Precinct 2. I think the sense that I got at last night's discussion and some today is that people aren't opposed to the idea of a drive-in food service. They felt that the standards that were developed were too restrictive and really closed out opportunities. At the same time, I recognize the amount of time and work that's gone into developing those standards, and I don't think it's reasonable to expect the planning board to come back at a fall meeting with revised standards, even given direction to try to make standards that are less restrictive. I'd like to suggest an amendment that extends the ban for an additional year so that the planning board has a chance to work on developing the standards, hold hearings, public hearings, so that there can be discussion of the issues, so that when it comes back again next year at this time, it can be a bylaw that can get the support needed. And so I would like to just recommend an amendment extending the ban an additional 12 months.
Can I just ask a question of clarification, please?
You've beaten me to the punch.
Do you want to extend the ban an additional 12 months from February or from May?
From February of '04, so that gives, you know, a whole year. February '06 is when it expires.
Right.
So one year before February '07.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure it was a February date and not a May. Thank you.[1734.51]
Mr. Ward, one minute. One, one question that arises to some, is this within the scope to be able to set a timeline on? And the town council and I agree, we believe it is within the scope, that instead of a total ban, a partial ban. And I'll recognize Mr. Ward.
All right. I, I think it is within the scope, if anybody cares. I used to make those rulings. I, I think I figured, Mr. Moderator, a way of doing this, so this would be a motion, and I agree with the last speaker, I think this is a wonderful idea. You'd be moving to amend the recommendation to the warrant committee. The warrant committee is no. So it's a motion to amend the recommendation to the warrant committee to the following. Instead of deleting the sentence, recommend that the sentence, subsection C, paragraph eight, be amended to read, "This paragraph eight, subsection C, shall expire," instead of twenty-four, "thirty-six months after enactment." So it's just one change. So the motion is to amend the recommendation to the warrant committee so that section three, subsection C, paragraph eight reads, quote, "This paragraph eight, subsection C, shall expire thirty-six months after enactment." And I'll make that motion.
That's a motion that's seconded. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion? This is the amended motion. Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized.
The planning board is agreeable to this motion, and we will, were it to pass, come before you next year with some, some more standards.
Mr. Jackson, where's Mr. Jackson? I'm assuming you're accepting Mr. Ward's clarity as a friendly amendment? Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? All right. Mrs. McGettrick, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, you're recognized.
Board of Selectmen unanimously supports the motion.
Seeing no one else waiting to speak, we'll close discussion. We're just waiting the recommendation to the warrant committee, which is typically our practice, to hear their recommendation before we go to vote. Ms. Innis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The warrant committee supports the amendment.
Okay. For clarity, this is an amendment to a bylaw article. It will require a two-thirds vote. If you are now going to be voting with the amendment that has been made here on the floor and supported by the warrant committee, you'll be voting a. If you're voting against the amendment, you'll be voting no. All those in favor of the amendment, supported by the warrant committee, say aye? Opposed, no? I declare that a two-thirds vote. The motion carries. Please state your point of order.
I'll do it. Yeah, that, that's just to get the, the motion amended. Now you have to vote two-thirds.
Good point. It needed a majority for the amendment. Thank you. Does everyone understand that? It had been amended, the main motion had been amended. We've accepted that amendment. Now we've got to vote the full, full article. The full article does require two-thirds. And again, this would be, the recommendation is now from the warrant committee to support this article. So if you're voting with the warrant committee and the main motion, now you're voting in favor of this article and against no. All those in favor of the recommendation to the warrant committee, vote aye? Opposed, no? I declare it a two-thirds vote. Thank you. We are now on to Article forty-nine. Article forty-nine, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter ten of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws as follows. One, by adding the following paragraph three to section six, area regulations, subsection G, three, driveways and paved areas. In the front yard setback area of a lot, as required by section six, subsection B, paragraphs one, two, and three, for lots and residences A, 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 B, and C districts, no more than forty percent of the setback area shall be paved or covered with an impervious surface. Two, by adding the following subsection K to section seven, parking regulations, K, parking in the front yard setback area in residence double A, A, B, and C districts. In the front yard setback area of a lot, as required in section six, subsection B, paragraphs one, two, and three, for lots and residents double A, A, B, and C districts, no motor vehicle shall be parked except in a driveway or contiguous parking area, provided that no such driveway and contiguous parking area, if any, shall separately or in combination cover more than thirty percent of the setback area. And to otherwise act thereon and submitted by the planning board, and at the time of print, we had no recommendation. We have a revised recommendation. I recognize the chairman of the warrant committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The warrant committee recommends that town meeting members vote no. At the time of the presentation, the warrant committee was concerned that this article would unduly restrict residential parking.
Now, for clarity and a reminder, it's another bylaw, and it will require a two-thirds vote ultimately. And I recognize the chair of the Board of Selectmen, Mary McGettrick.
The front yard setback article is designed to do two things, to prohibit the paving of an entire front yard and prohibit parking in a front yard on an area greater than a specified percentage of the front yard. This proposal for a zoning change is designed to protect the character of our neighborhoods with minimal intrusion on the property rights of individual homeowners. The problem that this is addressing is that when a front yard is entirely paved, the neighborhood begins to look more commercial than residential. That much impervious surface is also a bad idea environmentally, causing a lot more runoff into the street and into neighbors' yards. However, we've had to work on this one, just like all the other zoning proposals, for over a year and a half, to try to get it to the point where the zoning change proposes as limited a restriction as possible but addresses the problem. So this zoning change proposes only to limit the amount of pavement in the front yard, not the whole yard, and talks only about the amount of parking allowed in the front yard, not the whole yard. In other parts of our zoning bylaw, we do limit residential use to a maximum of five cars. We feel that this proposal is the minimum regulation necessary to preserve aesthetics and keep our neighborhoods looking residential. Milton also has a bylaw that prohibits overnight parking. How then do we reconcile these two reasonable objectives, both of which are designed to improve aesthetics and, in the case of overnight parking, to keep our streets clear during the night for public safety reasons? Obviously, there needs to be a safety valve for those residents who have no driveways or have more cars, but not more than the limit of five, than fit into their driveways in the front and rear of the house. That is the overnight parking sticker, available upon application to the police department after the police have made a site visit and determined that indeed you have no place to park on your property or reasonably available nearby. There is an application fee and a renewal fee, which covers the administrative costs, including the site visit. Providing the resident is in illegal residence and there's no parking available for his car off-street, the police will issue an overnight parking sticker. There are currently between sixty and eighty of them that have been issued, and they are available, and the resident can then park on the street. The Board of Selectmen and the planning board unanimously support this zoning change to prohibit the paving of entire front yards and the use of front yards for parking on more than one-third of the surface. As with other zoning changes, a pre-existing non-conforming use, one that's already in existence, in other words, if the front yard's already paved, that front yard will be able to continue to be paved, but in the future, we would be prohibited from paving entire front yards by this bylaw change. Thank you.
Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized.
The zoning provides that there is, in a double A zone, a thirty-foot no-build zone in the front of the lot. That's the front yard that we're referring to here. There's the same requirement in a residence B zone, twenty-five feet from the street line is a no-build zone, and in a C zone, it's a twenty-foot no-build zone. So the land is already restricted against building a structure, and what this seeks to do is to prevent it from being fully paved and then having end-to-end cars parked on it. It never was intended, or I don't think the people who wrote the zoning have ever conceived that the day would come when people would rip out their lawns and pour in concrete and park two or three cars in their front yard. This has, in fact, happened, and there is considerable pressure for parking in numerous parts of town, and it, it really is an eyesore, and it is destructive of the quality of life of other residents of these areas. And the solution, as Ms. McGettrick has pointed out, is twofold. One, restrict the amount of paving that you can do in this no-build zone, and we have determined that forty percent of it, no more than forty percent of the front yard should be paved. It's not unreasonable. And then, as far as parking vehicles, we suggest that they be parked on paved areas, but not to cover more than thirty percent of the setback area. We think that this is reasonable. We think that it addresses a real problem. We don't think that this is excessive government regulation. We think that the town will be better off if you vote yes.
Mr. Mason, you're recognized.
I'm Bob Mason, town meeting member from Precinct Eight. I rise to oppose this article. It may work very well in double A and A and B, but I live in C. My driveway and my neighbor's driveway are one driveway. It's blacktop from house to house. My house is twenty-five feet wide. My lot is fifty feet wide. I can only, my house sits kind of kitty-cornered, so there is eleven-foot distance from my house to the property line on one side, so I couldn't put a driveway in there, other than going in the front or beside, which you would consider my front lawn, because my house is only ten feet from the sidewalk. So therefore, I have to, and I did years ago, put a second driveway beside there. Other than that, it's musical chairs at six o'clock in the morning. I have my son, two daughters, my wife, myself. We all have vehicles. Okay? Who's going to get up to move whose car, what, where, when, why, how? Okay? This sounds very nice, and I'm sure nobody wants to have blacktop on their front lawn, et cetera. However, the reality is, we all have multiple-vehicle families now. Nobody wants to play musical chairs at six o'clock in the morning, nor do my neighbors want to hear car doors opening and closing. In a large lot that you have, it might work. In residential C areas, in my area, which is an older neighborhood, it doesn't work. I'm sorry. I'm deadly against this article. There is no room for me to, to extend my driveway on, on one side because of the eleven feet. I can't, a car's wider than eleven feet. I can't go on the other side because I've already, I already have three cars, four cars there. So there's, there's no way I can get back. I have a garage there, so other than tearing the garage down and moving it back, then I'd be parking in my pool. So, you know, it's fine in a, in a large lot, but when you have a large number of houses that are in a restricted area, it just doesn't work. So I'd ask you to vote no on this article. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing none, just for clarification, this will require a two-thirds vote. If you're voting in favor of the, of the article, you'll be voting yes. If you're voting along with the warrant committee's recommendation, you'll be voting no. All those in favor of the motion, vote aye? Opposed, no? That's too close. We'll try, let's try it one more time. Maybe my hearing wasn't good. First of all, what, that's really not a point of order. Let me, let me clarify it so you understand. The, a call for a voice vote. If I feel uncomfortable that I've got a reading of the voice vote, it's okay for me to call for another voice vote. If the body, if seven members standing in their seats challenge my vote, that would force a standing vote. I'd like to have another voice vote. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, the article, say aye? Opposed, no? That's too close. We're going to have a standing vote. I need to have some tele-help in section one. If I could have Ruth Baltopolous and Gregory Buchanan. In section two, if I could have Joseph McGettrick and Joanne Stanley. In section three, if I could have Martha Kemp and David Shea. Okay. In section three, would you please cover section three plus everybody in the front of the hall? Section one, we'll be, we'll be voting the whole section over to my left. Section two is the entire middle section, and section three, you'll be covering the section on the side and everybody in the front. Do you wish to be recognized?
Just to clarify, can we understand what the warrant committee recommended? There's a little confusion out there.
Well, the warrant committee did make their recommendations to the body. It, it's, it's... You, you recommended a no vote. For clarity, I'll recognize Emily Innis.
The warrant committee recommended a no vote. So if you were voting with the warrant committee, you voted no. If you were voting for the article and against the warrant committee, you voted yes.
Okay. All those voting yes, please stand. Okay, my tellers, are we all set in Section 2? Section 1 tellers, we all set with your count? I guess not. Are you all set? Okay. Okay, will everyone please take their seat? And all those in agreement with a no vote of the warrant committee, please stand. Are you all set? Are you all set? Joanne? Joanne? Are you all set? No, no, no. No, I'll call for your vote. I just want to make sure you're all set. Okay, please take your seats. Thank you. Section 1? Forty, yes, and seven, no. Section 2? Section 3? Thank you. Oh, that last count for Section 3 was 48, yes, and 18, no. The vote was 181, yes, 34, no. That motion carries. Article 50. To see if the town, in Article 50, in the bottom of page 82, if you're following, to see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, known as zoning bylaws, as follows. By inserting the following new paragraph 10 to subsection A of Section 3, 10, the following use, if authorized by a business certificate issued by the town clerk to a resident or residence upon payment of a fee and subject to the following conditions: A, home occupation. A, the home occupation shall be conducted in no more than 400 square feet within the dwelling, and all materials, equipment, and facilities related to the home occupation shall be included in that space. Outside storage shall not be permitted in a home occupation. A floor plan drawn to scale that details the area in which the home occupation will be conducted and such other material is specified by the town clerk shall be included as part of the permit application. A detailed description of the home occupation shall also be included as part of the application. B, only persons residing in the dwelling may engage in the home occupation, and there shall be no more than three persons engaged in the home occupation. C, merchandise, operations, signs, and other indications of any kind regarding the home occupation shall not be visible from the outside of the dwelling. D, the appearance, appearance of the dwelling shall not be altered in any manner which reflects or indicates the home occupation is being conducted in the dwelling. E, the home occupation shall not generate pedestrian and/or vehicular traffic to or from the dwelling. F, there shall be no use of commercial vehicles for regular deliveries of goods and materials to or from the dwelling. G, the home occupation shall not create noise, odor, dust, vibration, fumes, or smoke discernible by, at any boundary of the lot on which the home occupation is situated. It shall not create any electrical disturbance affecting electrical appliances located on adjacent properties, and it shall not create any hazardous or potentially hazardous condition or conditions. H, the home occupation shall be permissible under any applicable lease or rental agreement, or in the case of a condominium project, any applicable covenants, conditions, or restrictions. I, home occupation shall not involve sexually-oriented conduct. J, home occupation shall be conducted in accordance with all applicable state and federal laws and regulations, and with all applicable municipal requirements. If all of the foregoing conditions are satisfied, the town clerk shall issue a business certificate for the home occupation. A business certificate issued in accordance with this section shall be enforced, and in effect, for four years from the date of issue, and upon payment of a fee. For each renewal, may be renewed for additionally four-year terms, so long as the home occupation shall have been conducted in accordance with these conditions. The certificate shall lapse and be void at the, at the end of its term unless so renewed. Any violation of the conditions imposed in this paragraph 10 on a home occupation shall cause for the revocation of the home occupant, occupation business certificate by the Building Commissioner pursuant to Section 8 dot A. Upon such occupation, such home occupation shall cease immediately. In the event that such, such home occupation shall continue following revocation or expiration of a business certificate in notice to the residents, the resident, the residents shall be subject to a fine of no more than $50 for each offense, with each day that a business continues following such notice being deemed a separate offense. No home occupation shall be conducted except in compliance with the foregoing condition pursuant to a business certificate or, as otherwise authorized by special permit issued by the Board of Appeals pursuant to Section 3, subsection A, paragraph 7, subsection I, into otherwise act thereon. This is submitted by the Planning Board, and it is recommended the town vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaws, as printed in the warrant, with the exception that the words "related to the home occupation" shall be added at the end of paragraph F, at the end of sub-paragraph F of paragraph 10, so that sub-paragraph F reads, quote, "There shall be no use of commercial vehicles for regular deliveries of goods and materials to or from the dwelling related to the home occupation," close quote. I recognize the Chair of the Planning Board, Mr. Whiteside. This will require a two-thirds vote also.
Currently, in residence zones, home occupations are not permitted except pursuant to a special permit issued by the Board of Appeals. If you've read the handout from the Planning Board, you will see that there is a certain amount of noncompliance with the prohibition of home occupations. And in recognition of that, as well as to set out what we consider to be reasonable standards pursuant to which home occupations should be conducted, and with the collection of a certain amount of money, but nothing that will overcome the deficit. But we, we think that people who pay and who will comply with these standards should be able to get a business certificate from Mr. Mullin without going to the Board of Appeals. We think that this recognizes reality. We think that it will preserve the residence zones. We think that it is an article which should be supported.
Mr. May, you're recognized.
I'd like to suggest that there's another way for us to overcome the prohibition, and that's simply to allow them. And allow them with some, I don't think, all of these restrictions. I don't see any reason to have a permitting process. The fact of the matter is that many people in today's circumstances are able to work at home with no signs of doing so apparent to anyone. I think the only thing that we should be concerned about is whether or not our home starts to look like a business. So I would recommend that rather than the complex process and another permitting step that we have to go through, that we simply say, "We permit home businesses as long as they do not do certain things." This list is a good starting point. I'd like to see the whole issue of permitting eliminated from the proposal. As the proposal stands, I urge that we vote no.
Mrs. McNamara, you're recognized.
Mary McNamara, Precinct 10. I read the article also with a great deal of interest and tried to, you know, digest a lot of the detail that's in the article. I think that home occupations are an important topic because in this day and age, there are a lot of people who are trying to conduct their employment, their business, from their home, whether it's because they're stay-at-home mothers, and this is a way to supplement the income for the family, or whether it's because a person is in an occupation, for instance, a high-tech occupation, which doesn't require their presence in an office. So it's certainly an issue for the town to give some consideration to. But my problem with the article was a couple of very fundamental questions. First of all, I was wondering exactly what the town was trying to accomplish by the article. I assumed right off the bat that the town was trying to generate revenue. So if we have a fee, which, by the way, is not indicated here to any extent, I assumed the town would be able to use the money, let's say, toward one of the budgets that we're so concerned about. But in fact, it's been pointed out to me that these kinds of fees can only be used to pay for the services being provided to the resident in the form of the special permit. So for instance, if we have a fee, the money earned on, and, please correct me if I'm incorrect, but I was led to believe that fees have to simply go back to feeding the services being provided to the town. So for instance, if Mr. Mullin is setting up a process to provide a permit for someone who wants to run a business from their home, the fee can only be sufficient to cover the payment to the town for that service. And if that's the case, then obviously, we're not generating revenue. My other consideration here in the issue of revenue was that perhaps what would happen is that the town would then be able to more clearly tax those parcels of land in a way that part of the property would be taxed at a residential rate, and another part of the property, a certain percentage, would be taxed at the commercial rate. Why? Because there is a business going on there. And if that was the case, I think that that language should appear somewhere in this article so that it is clear to the residents that there is going to be that kind of a benefit to the town. And that was my first impression. Is it going to generate some revenue? Is it going to be a benefit, which obviously, the most important types of benefits, right now anyway, seem to be monetary? Secondly, is it being proposed by the town? Is this article being proposed? Because the home businesses which are in existence, and apparently, the town has done its homework and discovered there is well over 600 home businesses, are these businesses a nuisance in the neighborhoods where they exist? And that is certainly a possibility. If that is a possibility, then there is obviously a very important reason for Town Meeting to consider this article and what it is asking. However, my problem is that it is my knowledge there is already a bylaw which says there shall be no home businesses in residential neighborhoods, or words to that effect. And if a home business is unable to remain discreet, as Mr. May just pointed out, and in fact, has become a nuisance to the neighborhood, is not the current bylaw sufficient to provide enforcement officers what they need to bring that nuisance business to heel? And I would appreciate some response on that particular issue. I would like to know whether or not the current bylaw is able to control those home businesses which are nuisances. And by that, I mean either businesses that are maintaining business equipment, automobiles, trucks in an area in a residential neighborhood, certainly, a business which has been complained about by the neighbors, maybe because of the hours it is keeping, or the equipment or materials that are exposed to the residential character and destroying the residential character of the neighborhood. But again, is the current bylaw, we do have a bylaw, regulating home businesses, is the current bylaw unable to do that? So so far, I've got two questions here. What are we trying to do with this article? And I'm not sure we're able to achieve it with this. My third point I want to make is quite simply that I don't think this is an article which is welcoming to businesses, all right? I think it's an article which is trying to weed out as many businesses as possible, even good, positive, beneficial businesses, all right? I think there are many aspects of the article which are way too narrow, which a business could never function, and yet be a business which might, which might be a positive influence in the neighborhood and certainly, a contributory member of the town, all right? Again, we might be able to get some additional revenue from that property if we can adjust their tax rate, all right? If we're going to adjust their tax rate, though, I think we should let them know we're going to do that in advance. And then there were just a few things about the article itself I wanted to mention that I felt were not encouraging to businesses. I don't think these are things that are actually welcoming to home businesses. The fact that you cannot have any pedestrian or vehicular traffic, all right? Well, if you're a business that has any contact with human beings, you're going to have one or the other, all right? And there, I'm sure there are some that will have no contact with humans, but there are a lot of businesses which legitimately can run from a home which have contact with humans. No signs. In actual fact, there are many signs throughout this town, very tastefully done. I happen to have one myself, all right? Which apparently are perfectly valid under the current bylaws. So I think what that issue there might be is the fact that we're going to develop a conflict between what is said in other parts of the bylaws and what's being said here. No employees at all. Does that mean you can't have a bookkeeper come on the property in order to balance out your books once a month? That seems a little extreme. How about no storage? No use of your garage or your attic? Why? Because you have to confine all of your business dealings to the 400, up to 400 square feet allowed to you, which has to be all in the same place inside the dwelling. Clearly, no use at all at the garage. If you have a large box of files you want to store in your garage, you're not going to be allowed to do that. There are others, and I won't go on here because I think others may want to speak to this. I would urge a no vote on this article. I do think it is an issue that's of concern and importance, and I would like to see it reexamined. But I don't think this article is responsive to the needs of the town. Thank you.
I recognize Mrs. McHattick, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, for some clarity.
On a couple of points made by the previous speaker, just to clarify, if a fee is accepted by the town, it goes into the general fund. It's not applied to the department that it goes to. There are legal restrictions in terms of how large a fee a town might be allowed to charge. The fee is, the size of the fee is supposed to be generally related to the administrative costs incurred by that function. But that the fee is not required to go back into the department that takes it. I just wanted to address the article itself with a few remarks about the selectman's position. We do support this article unanimously. We, two years ago, we created a study committee to look at whether there ought to be changes in our zoning bylaws relating to home occupations. The reason for this was basically that the bylaw language relating to home occupations, which requires that if you wish to pursue one, you must obtain a special permit from the Board of Appeals, is very old language, and we didn't think that- the Board of Appeals, is very old language, and we didn't think that it really related to current life as it is, that many people have computers and that there are ways that you can conduct a home occupation that have absolutely no impact on your residential neighborhood. The current bylaw language simply does not address that situation effectively, or at least we felt, that perhaps you should not have to go to the Board of Appeals to get a special permit if you're conducting a home business that has no impact on your residential neighborhood. So that was the reason that we, that the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen have tried to work on a bylaw that would allow what I would call sort of the invisible home occupation to exist without a requirement for a Board of Appeals process. It took a lot of work to get this particular proposal drafted, and a lot of good points have been made about the language. I do want to simply say that this zoning change permits only the type of home occupation that has no visible appearance, no employees, other than the homeowner, requires no signs, and has no deliveries in excess of ordinary residential home deliveries, and requires no visible changes in the residential property. And that is absolutely intentional. That is what we intended to do. Any other type of home occupation could still be made legal by an application to the Board of Appeals for a special permit, which is the current process for any home occupation. And the reason for that is that when you have a sign, or you have deliveries, or you have clients who come to your house, there is some impact on the residential neighborhood. It is not a residential use. And in that type of situation, a process that involves a public hearing before the Board of Appeals is appropriate. The neighbors are, should be entitled to notice and should be entitled to say if they feel that there will be a substantial detriment to their property and their residential use by this other use. So that certainly was intentional, that this be a very narrowly written provision. The new provision would allow such occupations to be conducted as long as they're virtually invisible, without a Board of Appeals hearing. You go to the town clerk's office, you fill out an application, you attest to the nature of the home occupation use you intend to have, and if that use is within the limitations as described here, you would be entitled to a permit. Mr. Mullin has informed us that the permit, which is for four years, is $100, $25 a year. And that's actually a business certificate, which is currently available. It's just that a home occupation today, to be able to go and apply for a business certificate, would have to have a valid Board of Appeals permit. And there are very, very few applications that have ever been filed under that process. Today, there are businesses that can be conducted simply through the use of a computer, a fax machine, and a business telephone line. They are invisible from next door. They use no signs. They use no deliveries, any different from those that are residents. And we feel that permitting them as a legal use will not adversely impact the residential neighbor, nature of the neighborhood. We do feel that other business uses might and that they correctly belong still with the Board of Appeals process. Thank you.
Chair, you're recognized.
Tim Kernan, Brushell Road, Precinct 11. I recognize the town's interest in controlling business, or at least having some awareness of what the business activity is in the town. But I think this article does not address the real needs. There's a couple of problems that I see with this proposal, and I've expressed them to the Planning Board this February. First of all, there's an inadequate definition of what a home occupation is. I raised the issues of sales representatives who just are operating out of their houses and others who have invisible types of businesses. And I think the answer from the Selectmen's Office was that this bylaw is intended for those businesses that are not otherwise registered with the state. I think that needs to be so stated in the bylaw because otherwise, any corporation who happens to have an office in the state and running in their house would have to fall under this bylaw. So that needs to be clarified. Secondly, I think the restriction on submitting a floor plan to the town is inappropriate. I don't see the need to submit to the town a layout of my house, where my offices are, where my computers are, where my files are. I just think it's unnecessary. If this bylaw gets to a point where there may be a taxation based upon that, then maybe I could see that that would be a valid requirement. Thirdly, the restriction on the space is inadequate. I've been running a business, and it's a state-registered business, it's a corporation, so I'll follow up accordingly if this passes. But I've got years and years of files that I need to keep. I can't keep them in the same office I operate. They're in my attic and they're in my basement. So the requirement for space is inadequate and inappropriate. The restriction on delivery, I think, is inappropriate. I get a UPS delivery or FedEx delivery once a month. It's very small, very modest, and I do recognize that that line was recalled. So thank you.
Mr. Ward, you're recognized.
Rick Ward, Precinct 9. I think the intent of this article is very worthy. But again, the details are important. I think the situation that we have now is you have a lot of people, and I don't run, so I have no interest in this personally. I don't run a home business at all. Office is downtown, as most of you know. But just as the Warrant Committee picked up on its, in its recommendation that, "Well, wait a minute, we want to modify sub-paragraph F," I think there are some details here that need to be addressed, or at least one that's major. I think drawing the line at businesses where not one vehicle can come to your house as part of your business is excessive. I think the point here is to, in fact, get those who run home occupations to come forward and so we can get some sense of how many there are and get a little revenue from them. Right now, you just have this culture out there where people are running them, they're not going to the Board of Appeals, and they're just running them. And many of them are good, and they're not obtrusive. I can think of one. There's a fairly well-known psychiatrist in town, and she has a long driveway, and, you know, she has like, you know, one car an hour visiting her. And she's, the psychiatrist has invested all kinds of money in terms of having a separate place in her house to have her psychiatric practice. And under this, she wouldn't be able to do that. Now she could go to the Board of Appeals and maybe, you know, and go to all that trouble. But it seems to me that therefore, this is a little too restrictive. And I would suggest, and offer as a friendly amendment, if the Warrant Committee will buy it, to Section E, just put in, instead of the home occupation shall not generate pedestrian and/or vehicular traffic to or from the dwelling, put the home occupation shall not generate excessive pedestrian or vehicular traffic to or from the dwelling by adding the word excessive. That would allow some leeway there, such as the one example that I know, which is not obtrusive in the neighborhood at all, and would allow the worthy purposes of this amendment to go forward by broadening, broadening it slightly. In other words, as Mary McNamara pointed out, there are just a lot of businesses where, you know, there's going to be some vehicular traffic, and I think it should be inclusive of that and not just leave those persons to the ifiness, frankly, of going to the Board of Appeals. And if the Warrant Committee does not accept that as a friendly amendment, I'm not going to offer it as a formal amendment, but I'm going to vote against it if they don't agree.
Does the Warrant Committee understand where that word excessive would be inserted?
Where? Before the word pedestrian?
Before the word pedestrian. He's looking to see if he'll accept it as a friendly amendment. Where the heck is pedestrian? I don't know where it is, do you? No, I don't. I'm trying to figure it out. I mean, their recommendation is this, and the words are here. He's really trying to amend it. They do say that by law. Oh, here it is. Here it is. Excessive vehicular. I get you. Thank you. I'm trying to stay away from this world because I'm trying to help people. There's some people, you know, if I get it all, it's an automatic no. So I'm trying to avoid that. No, thanks. I'm enjoying watching it, though. Should we begin to speak again? You accept the friendly amendment at the Warrant Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Warrant Committee does accept the friendly amendment.
Mrs. Dunphy's way the longest. Mrs. Dunphy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Catherine Dunphy, Precinct 9. I rise to ask you to support this article. And the reason I do is when I was a selectman, Jim Mullin, our town clerk, used to have, refer to me, residents of the town who are working in their own homes, who wished to obtain a business certificate because they had found it was necessary for the success of their business. He was not allowed to issue a business certificate to them. This was an impediment to people who live in our neighborhoods, who would not cause any harm to our neighborhoods, but who wanted to improve their businesses. And for those people whom I don't know, whose names I don't remember, and many others who probably in the same circumstances, I ask you to support this article.
Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized.
Back in February, when we had a hearing on this article in a snowstorm, there was a vigorous discussion as to excessive vehicular or pedestrian traffic. And some people suggested five cars an hour might not be excessive. Others said, "Well, we think it would be excessive." The bottom line is, you add language like that, and the words have no meaning because it becomes totally subjective. So unfortunately, the Planning Board cannot accept it, or does not agree with the friendly amendment and opposes it.
Mr. Whiteside, just for clarity, we've, unfortunately, we do have, the Warrant Committee has accepted it as a friendly amendment. Are you asking to amend it, to strike the word excessive?
Yes, I would have, I would move that we strike the word excessive from the Warrant Committee's recommendation.
That's a motion. Is Eppen seconded?
Seconded.
Is the discussion on this amendment, the motion to amend, anyone wish to speak to that? Mr. Ward, you're recognized.
I like the present recommendation of the Warrant Committee. Not that I didn't do it, but I don't have any doubt that when somebody comes in and explains their business to Mr. Mullin, and they say, "I want to run a home occupation. See, I want to ride, have a drive-through coffee," but Mr. Mullin's going to say, "I think that's a little excessive." And in the one example that I gave, and keeping in mind what we're really trying to do is to get these businesses registered, he's going to say, "Okay, there's one vehicle essentially an hour on your appointments, and it's way around back and has no impact." He's going to say, "That's not excessive." There are some things in life that call for judgment, okay? And I think that there is a problem with the word excessive, because what is it? But I don't have any doubt. I put my faith in Mr. Mullin, who's going to be able to make those judgments. So I recommend that you, that you vote no for this amendment, which was solicited by the town moderator.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the amendment?
My name is Buddy Packer. I'm from Precinct 1, and I rise to say that it seems that Sections A through H are very clear, and I support them. I like the idea that--
Mr. Packer, actually, here's, here's our dilemma. I'm actually, here's what we have. We have the Chairman of the Planning Board, who has gotten up and has made an amendment to the motion to strike the word excessive--
Are we speaking to the amendment?
Okay. We're speaking, no, we're speaking to the motion that Mr. Whiteside has made to strike the word excessive.
I'll sit.
Thank you. Mrs. McGetrick, you're recognized.
The Board of Selectmen supports the amendment by the Chairman of the Planning Board. Is that right? In other words, we don't like the word, the excessive language either, and I'd like to just explain my own perspective on it. And what we're trying to do here, again, was to define a narrow range of home businesses that do not impact the neighborhood. If you wanted to try to come up with some kind of language that said, "The vehicular traffic would not be of a different nature than you would find in a residential neighborhood" or something like that, I might, I might be willing to accept that. Basically, though, what we're trying to do here was not to permit every business that's operating illegally currently in Milton without a Board of Appeals process. We were trying to define those businesses that indeed do not impact the neighborhood, really are not a problem for anybody, and ought to be able to get a business certificate and really shouldn't have to go through a public hearing process with the Board of Appeals. I think that this language, excessive, opens up all kinds of possibilities. You can have a business where you are, you're making crafts in your house, and you might have, you could have 10 people a day, or 20 people an hour, or 10 people an hour, coming in and out of your house, parking their car and going in. That's not the type of use that I perceive that this bylaw would apply to. That's a use that should be regulated and needs, I think, a Board of Appeals process or needs a whole different bylaw, but not this proposal. This proposal's designed only to address a narrow range of uses, but there are a lot of them out there. I mean, you can do a whole investing business with your computer. You can do all kinds of things at home without having any visible indication of what you're doing today because of technology. And I just want to, you know, make sure that everybody understands what this bylaw intended to do and did not intend to do. And I think if we start trying to rewrite provisions in it to include more things, we're going to get into some very sticky definitional problems, and we're really going to be much broader, certainly, than we intended when we crafted this. Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to speak to this amendment of striking the word excessive? I recognize the Chairman of the Warrant Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Warrant Committee is unanimous in voting against the amendment. We stand by the original friendly amendment, which we accepted.
Okay, seeing no one else wishing to speak to this, we are going to be voting on just the motion by the Chairman of the Planning Board to strike the word excessive. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Chairman of the Planning Board to strike the word excessive will vote a. All those voting in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee will vote no. All those in favor of striking the word excessive, do you wish to speak?
Yes.
That's okay. Take your time. Mrs. McNamara, I won't enforce any running down the aisle. Thank you.
I apologize. Helene Haddad, Precinct 9. I don't think we ever put the word excessive in, did we?
We did. We accepted, Mr. Ward had recommended as a friendly amendment to the Warrant Committee, whose the main motion is in front of the body. The Warrant Committee accepted the friendly amendment. At that point, it was in.
Okay. And that's all we need to do. We didn't need to vote on that.
We just need to vote on now the motion by the Chairman of the Planning Board, who said, "Let's strike the word excessive."
Okay.
That's all we're going to vote. Then we're going to go back to the main motion to discuss the article.
Okay. So we're voting on taking out the word excessive?
Striking the word excessive. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that for the members. So if you're voting in favor of the motion by the Chairman of the Planning Board, you'll say aye. Voting against the motion by the Planning Board and with the Warrant Committee, say no. against the motion by the planning board and with the warrant committee, say no. The motion is defeated. Now we're back to discussing the original article. The amendment, which is a motion, is defeated. Striking the word excessive is Oh, I apologize. You thought I was just explaining it, not taking the votes. That's a bit excessive. Let's take the vote. When I speak now, we're voting. All those in favor of the motion of the chairman of the planning board, vote aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of following the recommendation of the warrant committee, vote no.
No.
The noes have it. Take your seats. I have seven members questioning the vote. We'll take a standing vote. Now, again, this is, we're taking a standing vote just on this motion about excessive. We'll use the same tellers. Ruth Balthopolis in Section 1, which is over here to my far left, with Gregory Buchanan, Joseph McGetrick, and Joanne Stanley in the middle. Section 2, and Section 3, Martha Kemp and David Shea cover the side here, as well as everybody in the front. Yeah, are you standing to vote? Let me, let me swing around. Because I'm trying not to stand. Oh. Ms. McGetrick, can I see you, please? Okay. All those in favor of the motion by the chairman of the planning board to strike the word excessive, please stand. Martha, are you? I don't need to count. Are you all set? Are you all set? Are you all set, y'all? Okay. I'd rather have everyone sit at once. Teller 1, Section 1, are you all set? Everyone, please take your seat. All those opposed to striking the word excessive, as is the recommendation of the warrant committee, please stand. Ruth? Ruth? Martha, David? Martha? Martha, David? Are you all set? Where's Ms. McGetrick? Are they still counting? Would everyone please take their seats? Section 1, Mr. Buchanan? Yes votes? Twenty-four yes votes?
Twenty-five no.
Twenty-five no. Ms. McGetrick, Section 2?
Yes thirty-seven, no sixty-eight.
Thank you. That's yes thirty-seven, no sixty-eight. Section 3, Ms. Kemp?
Thirty-three, no thirty-four.
The total vote is yes ninety-four, no one twenty-seven. The word excessive stays. We are back to discussing the article. Mr. Wilkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Wilkinson, Precinct 11. I am, I stand to urge a no vote on the motion, on the, on the article. And I hasten to say that I don't operate a business out of my home, but I'm familiar with a, a business that I think meets the objectives that the Board of Selectmen have outlined, and violates most every one of the specific provisions of the article. And I started to frame recommended amendments, and I realized as I started that process that it would, it would be foolish. And there's just too much work that needs to be done on this, both, you know, in terms of square footage, in terms of vehicular traffic, in terms of outside storage, even in terms of whether outside employees can be brought in to assist with the work. So I, I think I support the general objectives, but I think we need more work on this.
Mr. Packer, you're recognized.
Buddy Packer, Precinct 1. I support the general objectives also, and I say that all the illegal businesses that are going should be, have gone to the Board of Appeals and should not remain illegal. I do have some question, though. It seems as though our Sections A through H are generally intended to ensure privacy, it doesn't bother the neighbors, and invisible business. That's the intention of these. Section J says that everything should be legal. Section I says what? What exactly does Section I say? It says, "If you don't bother your neighbors, and nobody knows what's going on, and it's perfectly legal, somebody is going to exercise their judgment." They say, "No, no, no, you can't do that because..." Why? Because we live in New England? I mean, I don't know what this means, and I would like some sort of definition. I, you know, I actually don't think this is very funny. I actually think that going into someone's house and saying, "Even though you're not bothering anybody, even though what you're doing is legal, we don't like it, so you can't do it." I don't get that at all. And I would vote to strike Section I unless I have some sort of rational argument what it's about.
Mr. Packer, before we get into voting and all, I'm going to try to receive an answer to your question. Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized.
A few years ago, we created a special permit provision for sexually oriented businesses. And basically, what this is intending to say is that you can't have one of these sexually oriented businesses as a home occupation.
You recognize for one follow-up.
Can we get a definition of what that means?
It, it, it means pornography, pornographic films, paraphernalia, the usual sort of stuff you might find in the combat zone.
Would a brothel be included in that, Mr. Whiteside? Mr. Whiteside? Would a brothel be also included in that?
A brothel would probably be illegal.
You're recognized.
Hi, Laurie McIntosh, Precinct 9, formerly 5. I would like to just address the discussion of the ambiguity of this, which we were talking about a little earlier. And I want to say that I really like the ambiguity in this. This is written sort of like our constitution. It is very ambiguous to talk about a speedy trial. What is a speedy trial? The reason that these elements from A to J are ambiguous is so that assuming whatever this business is, isn't bothering anybody, nobody has to worry about it. But if there is one that is bothering the neighbors, they can then go here and say, "Aha, look, too many vehicles. They are excessive," or whatever. So I would like to urge you to vote yes on this, and to accept the ambiguity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Voight, you're recognized.
Renit Voight, Precinct 2. I'd like to take this from the theoretical to the practical, and I just have one question, and then a follow-up comment. If this passes, would it be permitted, or would it not be permitted, to have students taking piano lessons in someone's home?
Mr. Whiteside, can you provide some clarity on the question? Would this article address piano lessons in a home?
Well, the piano teacher would be the person conducting the business, and the student would be I think it's ambiguous.
Mrs. Voight, do you have a follow-up?
Well, my comment, my comment is just that, you know, for hundreds and hundreds of years, our children have been taught piano, violin, singing by little old ladies and little old men in houses. And I think if it prohibits something like this, I think this is just too restrictive. It needs to be reworked. Thank you.
Mr. Mullin, you're recognized.
Mrs. Voight, I would say the answer to your question is yes. I'm James Mullin, Jr. I'm the town clerk in the town of Milton. I very much hesitate to come to the microphone. And I do that because I know that there's a certain number of people here that if I said this was a nice Tuesday night, they would definitely say no. The way these weeks go, it might be Wednesday. But when I see myself voting with former moderator Ward, and with the warrant committee unanimously, I figured I might as well give it a shot, since I'm the most knowledgeable on this issue. The selectmen did establish a committee a couple of years ago. Our building commissioner, Mr. Crawford, and Mr. Michael Lynch worked on that committee. We brought forward a proposal to this town meeting last year. It was referred back. What we are trying to do is help people, our own people, our own neighbors. The main reason they asked for a business certificate is so that they can get a checking account. The banks are the main people that send them forward to us looking for them. We receive, I would say, three calls a week looking for a business certificate, and which we tell them, "It's under review. Town meeting has yet to vote for it. It's under review." Generally, the answer is, "Well, how long does the review take? How soon can I find out about it? Who do I speak to? Who do I call to expedite this, what they consider to be a small matter?" My colleagues, both previously and currently on the Board of Selectmen, will tell you that I am the abu da selectman. I'm always interested in the abudas, and I'm always interested in the neighborhoods, and what affects people in the neighborhoods. So I'd be the last person who would want to authorize anything that would affect any abu da. We have many, many businesses that are operating currently in the town of Milton. I don't know how they do it. Sometimes they say, "Well, maybe..." Or they ask about post office boxes. Can I operate out of a post office box? Or can I operate out of a post office box, in a post office box, et cetera, in East Milton Square? I think there's some hundred post office boxes in post office, et cetera, in East Milton Square. So I spoke with the owner of that property to ask him if he wanted to have a hundred businesses registered from his, his property. And he does not wish to have that, and nor do I think it would be correct. But we're trying to help the people of the town. I didn't write this bylaw. It was written the planning board. I really didn't have hardly any input into it at all. We would try to administer it in the office. My intention was to have a small questionnaire as to what people wanted to do, and make a determination if we thought it was proper or not. I can tell you that with any type of restrictions, and I can go back to the days when we had the landfill, there were always people who were trying to figure out a way to get into that landfill. I won't go into it, but they were always thinking of another way. When we said you couldn't have a trailer, you couldn't have a truck, they'd do something else. Landscapers, we had many different problems. So people are always trying to think of a way to get around whatever you do. So what I would say to you is, let's give this a try. Let's see what happens. We can always come back and amend it. We can come back and change it. I'll be the first one to say, if I think it isn't working well, but let's give these people an opportunity. In many instances, it's a telephone. You're talking, fax. You're talking about consultants. I'd say, yes, a piano teacher would qualify under this, under this bylaw. We did have an inquiry about someone going, "Mr. Packer was interested in this type of thing." I'm not interested in this type of thing, but Mr. Packer was interested in this type of thing. And this was a person who wanted to go make house calls for massage. I don't think that's the kind of thing we're talking about. I'm certainly not interested in that kind of... Well, a massage now and then isn't too bad. But give us an opportunity to try this, see how it works. We're only helping our own people. That's all we're doing. I think Mrs. McGetrick answered the questions about what happens about what happens with the money. Mrs. McNamara was concerned. Every dollar that is collected in the office is turned into the general fund. It always has been and it will be turned into the general fund. So we're talking about helping our own people. Let's give it a chance. Let's give this a try, see how it works. If it doesn't work out, I will be the first one to come back and say that adjustments need to be made. So I say, give this an opportunity. We're helping our own people. And the only reason I came down was because of the fact I voted with Mr. Ward and the Warren Committee. I figure if I talk about something, there's a certain percentage of people here that would just automatically be opposed to whatever I was saying. So, of course, when I'm on my own, I don't care. I just lower my head and try to do what I think is the best thing. But when I'm trying to help someone, I'm trying to make progress, and I sit back and say nothing as long as I think things are going in what I think is the right direction. So let's give this an opportunity. If it doesn't work out, if there are problems, we'll be back and we can, we can change it. I've heard the expression, do something, even if it's wrong. Thank you.
Mr. Voight, you're recognized.
Herb Voight, town meeting member, precinct two. I'm very sympathetic with the idea of this particular bylaw, but it does have some implications, I believe, because home occupations will take up a part of the person's home. And businesses have tax implications. There are things that can be deducted from the taxes. But I guess, it was alluded to earlier, that perhaps there's going to be some further consideration of reclassifying the residence versus commercial property taxes for these. And I'd just like some clarification, if that's on the horizon, because that, I think, is something we need to know about.
Mrs. McGetrick, you're recognized.
The classification of property is the purview of the assessors. And they may wish to speak to this. Maybe, maybe it would help us if they could. There's an issue of personal property taxes. But the point here is, if a business is operating in a home now, it should be subject to those taxes if it's operating under this bylaw provision. It should be subject to those taxes, if it is. I don't know if it is. I can't answer that question. The assessors may wish to address it. It's one of the wrinkles in requiring a permit, whereas now people might be operating invisibly and illegally. It's a choice that people have to make, whether to come in for a permit. I don't know what the implications are, though, for whether the assessor's office would contemplate going about looking for additional revenue from personal property taxes or something like that, from a business loan, for example, at such a residence. And so assessors may wish to address that, if you wish.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. McGetrick. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Steve McCurdy, precinct seven. I wanted to build upon Mr. Mullen's comment about giving it a try. What I would like to propose is an amendment that the bylaw have a three-year sunset provision, whereby if the town meeting doesn't act to extend it, it would go away. And that would give us three years to determine, excuse me, whether the, whether the bylaw was working as intended. So that's a motion.
That's a motion. And I heard a second. And I'm, I'm not sure what the exact verbiage of the motion is. And I'm trying to find a way to accomplish what you're asking.
Mr. Moderator.
Mrs. McCurdy. I believe Mrs. McCurdy is gonna read a amendment to the motion. We'll see if it's been seconded. He'll deliver it to me in writing, and then we'll discuss that amendment.
Mr. Moderator, at the end of the Warren Committee recommendation, it would be this paragraph shall expire thirty-six months from enactment. This paragraph ten shall expire thirty-six months after enactment.
Mrs. McCurdy, can I have that, please? All right, the motion has been made. It's been seconded. Thank you. Okay, folks, now we're just discussing this motion, which is a motion to amend. Mr. Whiteside, do you wish to speak to this?
Yes.
Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized.
I think Mr. Mullen was correct in saying that we are attempting to do something that's going to benefit the residents of the town. If there is a problem, we can amend the article. To have the article go away in three years doesn't make, isn't the way to go. If there is a problem in the first year, next year, we can, we can amend it. Mr. Bowen is committed to reporting on how this works. People can report on how it works. But to, to say that three years from now, it self-destructs, I think undoes all the good that the article will do. It will make it very uncertain for people who get these certificates. If three years from now, they face being in violation of the zoning, I don't think it's a good plan. And the planning board opposes it.
Mr. Winchester, you're recognized.
Charles Winchester, precinct three. I wanted to say essentially what Mr. Whiteside just said, that it seems to me, listening to the debate, we have a bylaw now that allows us people to go to the Board of Appeals if they have a home business that meets certain conditions. This is a liberalizing amendment to the bylaws that allows more people to register their businesses without the need of going to the Board of Appeals. I don't see the need for sunset provision. If there's a desire to further liberalize, that can be done in the future. It doesn't need the, the sun to set. I oppose this amendment and support the article.
Thank you. Mr. Mullen, you're recognized.
These people are going to apply for a business certificate, which is going to be for four years, and it's gonna expire in three.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this amendment? All those in favor of the, excuse me, we are looking for the Warren Committee's recommendation. So the Warren Committee is voting whether they will agree or disagree with adding the phrase, "This paragraph ten shall expire thirty-six months from enactment," at the end of their recommendation. Mr. Mullen, it is a nice Tuesday evening.
No.
Mrs. Edish, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Warren Committee does not accept the amendment.
Recommends against the amendment. Okay, if you are in favor of the amendment as proposed, as presented by Mr. McCurdy and seconded, you'll vote A. If you are following the recommendation of the Warren Committee, you'll vote no. All those in favor of the amendment, vote aye. Oppose, no. The amendment is defeated. We are now back to the main article, and you are recognized.
My name is Kathy Heffernan. I'm a town meeting member from precinct three and a member of the Board of Assessors. I have conferred with my colleague Joe Manning here this evening, and we are in accord that the Board of Assessors would be required to assess personal property taxes on the, the equipment used in these businesses. Commercial entities are required to file a list of their desks, phones, faxes, computers, chairs, et cetera, all the materials that are used in the conduct of their business. And they then receive a bill for a tax on that personal property. So it seems to us, and if town council disagrees, perhaps he could say so. But our thinking right now is that we would be required to, to assess people personal property taxes on the equipment used in the conduct of their home businesses. But on taking off my assessor's hat, I have to say, I'm really confused. And I'm loath to admit that because I, we've been talking about this now for quite a long time here. But the way I see it is, we now have businesses in commercial districts. And they are allowed, by virtue of the zoning, to conduct businesses within these commercial districts. Then we have residential districts, where there are illegal businesses. We are now trying to legislate that a particular category of these home businesses register with the town clerk. The assumption is that the other home businesses, other home businesses that don't conform to this proposed bylaw, will have to go to the zoning Board of Appeals. And those businesses that are not going to the zoning Board of Appeals today will not go tomorrow. So it seems to me that we could end up with a two-tiered system. We would have small, unobtrusive, invisible, not bothering anyone businesses forced to register with the town clerk. And then the rest of home businesses could continue, unless there is an enforcement of the bylaws against those businesses. So I am really opposed to the way this is drafted. I would further ask, I, as a member of the Board of Assessors, I am paid fifteen hundred dollars a year. Therefore, I am employed as an assessor. Now, if I, at my house, have a call from a taxpayer who wants to come over and talk to me about how to file for an abatement, I have to register? Get a permit? Because I'm a town employee? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Tim Kernan, precinct eleven. Just to pick up on the point, the previous point that was made, this article is no good. It does not have a clear definition of what type of business is applied to the bylaw. We just heard a couple of examples. There are no clear answers as to who applies and who does not. There's gonna be mass confusion. I agree that there should be a vehicle by which businesses can register with the town for the purposes that were outlined earlier. But this article does not identify what type of businesses must fall under this category. Until there's a definition of who applies, I'm voting no on this article. Thank you.
So you know, no one else wishing to speak? This will require a two-thirds vote. If you are voting for this article, which is recommended by the Warren Committee, you'll vote aye. If you're voting against it, you'll be voting no. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warren Committee, vote aye. Oppose, no. We'll have a standing vote. Our tellers, we'll go with the same group of tellers. All those in favor of this motion, please stand. Martha? You didn't count me, did you? No, I don't stand. Any of them. Yes, no, maybe so. Mr. Buchanan? You guys all set? Mrs. McGetrick? Are you all set? Numbers, please take your seat. All those opposed, voting no, please stand. Mr. McGentrick? Mr. McGentrick? Are you ready? I'm not, okay. Everyone, please take your seat. Ms. Balthopolis? Section 1?
Thirty-six, yes. Eleven, no.
Thirty-six, yes. Eleven, no. Mr. McGentrick, section 2?
Section 2, yes. Sixty-eight, no. Thirty-eight.
And Mrs. Kemp, section 1?
Forty-four, yes. Twenty-one, no.
That was forty-four, yes. Twenty-one, no. The vote is yes, 148; no, 70. The article meets the two-thirds majority and passes. Quick explanation, Article 51. Some of you may have noted that it was printed in the warrant and said withdrawn, and it might cause a question in your mind, why would we print a number in the warrant and have the word withdrawn? And that's because, in fact, it was a zoning article that was discussed and advertised by the planning board, and as such, some of our residents might have wondered what happened to Article Number 51, who was a placeholder, so that's why it's withdrawn. Article 52. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws as follows. One, by adding the following phrase to the first sentence of Section 6, subsection C, paragraph 6, after the word "building," quote, "except a one-family or two-family dwelling or a building which is accessory to a one-family or two-family dwelling," close quote, so that the sentence reads, "In addition to the provisions of paragraphs 1, 2, and 4, no building except a one-family or two-family dwelling or a building which is accessory to a one-family or two-family dwelling in a residence AA, AB, or C district shall be closer to a side lot line adjoining land in separate ownership than a distance equal to one-fifth of the sum of the building's height and its length measured parallel to such side lot line." H plus L divided by five. Height plus length divided by five. And the mathematician gave me an approval. I like that. And to otherwise act thereon. This is submitted by the planning board, and it is recommended the town vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws known as the zoning bylaws by adding language to the first sentence of Section 6, subsection C, paragraph 6, as printed in the warrant. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized.
This article results from a mistake made by the planning board. Currently, we have side yard setback requirements of 15 feet in the double A and A zones, 12 feet and 10 feet, 12 feet in the B zone and 10 feet in the C zone. So we do have side yard setbacks, but when we did the institutional use bylaw a number of years ago, we felt that for big buildings, really big buildings, that might not be a wide enough setback, so we provided this formula. Unfortunately, we didn't exclude residences, and since that time, the Board of Appeals has been spending most of its time applying this formula with respect to decks and other things that should be perfectly okay under the conventional rules, under the setback rules. It's made for a lot of confusion. It's, we really have to exempt residents from this, from this formula, and in the event that sometime we have a big building come in, we can, we could bring it out again. But it's a, it's a good change, and it will add certainty to people's lives and should make the town a better place.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this article? Seeing an unjust reminder, this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's unanimous. Article 53. Quick update, folks. The laws that govern the by, the moderator's duties are covered in our town bylaws. They're covered in parliamentary law, which has been upheld in the courts many times, referred to as town meeting time. I'll read you a quick passage from town meeting time. "A moderator should not preside over an article that presents a conflict. The appropriate action is to step down and allow the town's procedure for providing a substitute moderator to operate." Our town bylaws say, and this is section 5, "If a moderator is absent, a moderator pro tem may be elected by the town meeting members." I plan to step down for the deliberation of this article regarding the moderator's terms, and I would entertain, and I'd also note that what's been the custom here, we've done, I've certainly done, is entertain a motion where a town meeting member might have recommended one of our, either our immediate past moderator or a past moderator who's a town meeting member in the hall to moderate the proceedings. The past two immediate moderators in the hall are signers of this article, and so one would say there's a conflict of interest. So I would entertain a motion to elect a moderator to moderate this article, and I recognize the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mary McGentrick.
I move that the town meeting elect John Flynn, Town Council, as moderator pro tem for the purpose of moderating Article 53.
Second. So moved and second. Anyone wish to discuss? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? It's unanimous. Mr. Flynn, I turn it to you. I might also mention, I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 8, and I've further reviewed the bylaws, and I feel I'm within my rights if I were to choose to speak to this article. Not sure if I will, but I do want you to know that.
Thank you.
Good evening. If I get a motion to take the article out of order, I guess town meeting would have to consider it. Article 53, which is on page 85 of the, excuse me just a second. Thank you. Just a couple of preliminaries before we proceed. I ask for your indulgence. I just asked that you, I will follow the moderator's rules that were read to you at the inception of the meeting. Just emphasize a couple of things. Please continue the courtesy and civility that you've been displaying so far. I think it's very important. Also, just a reminder to town meeting members, please state your name and precinct number when you speak in, if you've spoken before. That's important for the record and also for those who are watching from the public. And also a reminder that the only persons eligible to vote on this article or any amendments there to are town meeting members. Thank you. Article 53 reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend section, chapter of the town's general bylaws to change the moderator's term of office from one year to a term of three years." It's a petition article. There is a revised recommendation of the warrant committee. Hopefully, town meeting members have it. It was one of the handouts at the, in the lobby at each session. It's on a green sheet of paper. I will read it because there are some differences from what you have in your book. The recommendation of the warrant committee is recommended that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to enact legislation in substantially the following form, "Provided that the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. An act changing the term of office of the town moderator for the town of Milton be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1. The Charter by special act for the town of Milton, adopted by Chapter 27 of the Acts and Resolves of 1927, and revised by Chapter 306 of the Acts and Resolves of 1936, Chapter 63 of the Acts and Resolves of 1948, Chapter 67 of the Acts and Resolves of 1957, Chapter 597 of the Acts and Resolves of 1958, and Chapter 319 of the Acts and Resolves of 1971, is hereby amended as follows. Section 2. In section 5, in the first sentence, "The words and quotes at each annual town election shall be deleted and replaced by the words, quote, 'for a three-year term,' end quote." So that said first sentence reads, quote, "A moderator shall be elected by the registered voters of the town by ballot for a three-year term, and shall serve as the moderator of all town meetings except as otherwise provided by law until his successor is elected and qualified," close quotes. Section 3. This act shall be submitted for acceptance to the voters of the town of Milton at any regular or special town election in the form of the following question, which shall be placed on the official ballot to be used for said election. Quote, "Shall an act passed by the General Court in the year 2005 entitled 'An Act Changing the Term of Office of the Town Moderator for the Town of Milton' be accepted?" End of quote. If a majority of the votes in answer to said question is in the affirmative, then this act shall thereupon take full effect, but not otherwise. What's before you is the revised recommendation of the warrant committee that I just read. This article requires a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak on the subject matter of Article 53? Ms. Matthews, you're recognized.
Nancy Matthews, Precinct 10. This article was conceived to bring the moderator's position into line with other elected officials in the town. While selectmen, school committee members, and town meeting members serve three-year terms, the moderator is forced to run for office annually. This is an unfair burden, and it is also counterproductive. There is a steep learning curve in the position, requiring the moderator to learn the many technical procedures necessary to run an efficient and effective town meeting. Time is also necessary to acquire a catalog of citizens willing and qualified to serve on the various boards and committees the moderator appoints. Our previous two town moderators each served for a decade, thereby acquiring a wealth of knowledge and experience, which allowed them to better serve the town. I urge you to vote in favor of this article.
So anyone else who'd be wish to be heard on the subject matter of Article 53? Sir, you're recognized?
I'm Mike Mahalchuk from Precinct 7, and I'm just speaking as a person who's had his consciousness raised about women's liberation when our church went with inclusive language on hymns. And I would like to change the word, "until his successor is elected." Until, until a successor is elected. I offer that as a friendly amendment. Of the shortest possible length of word.
Mr. Davis, would you wait just a second, please? You'll be recognized, but I, um... Mr. Mahalchuk, to accomplish your purpose, I need to suggest, I think, some additional language. The word you wish to change appears in section 5 of the Charter at present. In other words, section 5 of the Charter presently reads at the end, as you see, "Until his successor is appointed, is elected and qualified." So my suggestion would be that if you wish to make the change that... Let me throw this out for your consideration, sir. In the second, if you look at section 2 of the revised, of the text of the revised recommendation, in the second line, after the words "replaced by the words 'for a three-year term," and then you add a phrase. And the word "his" shall be deleted and replaced by the word "a." And let me keep reading. So that said, let me read the entire text of, as I understand the amendment, sir, in addition to what's proposed in section 2, you wish to replace the word "his" with the word "a" at the end of the first sentence. So my suggestion is that you add, you propose a friendly amendment to the section 2 in the second line of the revised recommendation, add the words... in the second line of the revised recommendation, add the words, after the words "for a three-year term" in quotes, you insert the words, and the word, quote, "his," unquote, shall be replaced by the word "uh" in quotes. And if you continue along, so that said first sentence read, "A moderator shall be elected by the registered voters of the town by ballot for a three-year term and shall serve as the moderator of all town meetings except as otherwise provided by law until a successor is qualified, is elected and qualified." Does that capture the sense of the motion you wish to present, sir?
Yes, it does.
Does the warrant committee wish to consider accepting that as a friendly amendment?
Yes, the warrant committee will accept that.
The motion that's before the body at this time, then, is the text, the revised recommendation of Article 53, which is in the green sheet, with the changes which I just read. And if anyone would like me to repeat it, I'd be happy to. Is town meeting clear on what is before the body at this time?
Clear.
Does any other town meeting member wish to be heard on the subject matter of Article I see now what Mr. Walsh means by the lights here, that, I should have mentioned, if someone wishes to get my, I see Mrs. McHettick, but if someone wishes to get the chair's attention, and I can't see you, please speak up, because the lights are an issue up here. They're good, but it's just that they're right at eyeball level. Mrs. McHettick, you're recognized?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports the recommendation of the warrant committee.
Does any other town meeting member wish to be heard on the subject matter of Article It's a friendly amendment, Mr. Lynch, so it was accepted by the warrant committee. Mr. Davis, I'm sorry.
Hi, Frank Davis, Precinct Three. Frank Davis, Precinct Three. I'm not tall enough. I just wanted to hear from the warrant committee about the change in the printed version and what was recommended. Is that a procedural matter, or was it by law? Just was curious.
Would you like me to answer that, or would you? I'll attempt to answer that question because I think in large part, the answer involves a legal issue. Mr. Davis, as I understand the question, you asked for an explanation of the changes and the reasons for them between the printed recommendation in the book and the revised The changes between what you see printed on page 86 of the warrant book and the green sheet that's in front of you now are these. In section two, the language that appears after the words "for a three-year term" in the third line, basically the last two lines of section two are new. And the reason for that is that's the text as it appears in the Charter. And when I submitted it to the warrant committee, I only gave them the text of the clause that was being amended and not the entire sentence. So the last two lines of the section two on the green sheet are new, in addition to the language that was just added by the friendly amendment tonight, referring to the, replacing the word "his" with the word "uh." The second change is that in section three, you'll see that in the book, it says that this act shall take effect upon its passage. The text of section three is essentially new, so instead of saying it shall be effective upon its passage, it provides a procedure for it being effective upon its acceptance by the voters. And the reason for that is that although what's being proposed is a home rule petition, it seemed to be to err on the side of caution because your Charter in section four, the section immediately preceding what seeks to be amended here, says in part that all articles in the warrant for every town meeting, so far as they relate to the election of the town moderator, shall be so acted upon and determined by registered voters of the town and their respective precincts. In other words, the Charter at present requires any warrant article which affects the election of the town moderator to be submitted to the voters. And although this is a special act of the legislature, it's a proposed special act of the legislature, it seemed upon review that it would be appropriate to put it in there because it was at least probable, if not likely, that the legislature would see fit to return it to the voters, given the text of the Charter. Does that answer the question, sir? Does any other town meeting member wish to be heard on the subject matter of Article Hearing no further debate. And what's before you is the revised recommendation of the warrant committee with the amendment accepted by the warrant committee. And I'll read it. "The motion for consideration by the body is recommended that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the General Court to enact legislation substantially the following form, provided that the General Court may reasonably vary the form and substance of the requested legislation within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition. An act changing the term of office of the town moderator for the town of Milton, be it enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled and by the authority of the same as follows. Section one. The Charter by special act for the town of Milton, adopted by chapter 27 of the Acts and Resolves of 1927, and revised by chapter 306 of the Acts and Resolves of 1936, chapter 63 of the Acts and Resolves of 1948, chapter 67 of the Acts and Resolves of 1957, chapter 597 of the Acts and Resolves of 1958, and chapter 319 of the Acts and Resolves of 1971, is hereby amended as follows. Section two. In section five, in the first sentence, the words "at each annual town election" shall be deleted and replaced by the words "for a three-year term," and the word "his" shall be replaced by the word "uh." So that said first sentence reads, "A moderator shall be elected by the registered voters of the town by ballot for a three-year term and shall serve as the moderator of all town meetings except as otherwise provided by law until a successor is elected and qualified." Section three. This act shall be submitted for acceptance to the voters of the town of Milton at any regular or special town election in the form of the following question, which shall be placed on the official ballot to be used for said election. Shall an act passed by the General Court in the year 2005 entitled 'An Act Changing the Term of Office of the Town Moderator for the Town of Milton' be accepted? If a majority of the votes in answer to said question is in the affirmative, then this act shall thereupon take effect, but not otherwise. Is town meeting clear on the question before the body?
Yes.
All those in favor of the revised recommendation of the warrant committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please indicate by saying no. It's unanimous vote. Thank you.
No problem.
Folks, given the hour, and we did meet late last night, we will be meeting Thursday night, and we will be coming back next Monday night. I believe we should not go into a discussion now on the long-range planning committee because I believe that there will be some discussion regarding that article. But before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I'd like to just to give you a quick explanation of what will take place on Thursday night because it's a bit unusual. Your moderator met with proponents of Article 55 and opponents of Article 55. And I would tell you, your moderator has actually been contacted by residents and others. Many, more people have sought me out and talked to me about Article 55 than probably all the articles I've ever stood over here at town meeting. And so it seemed reasonable, there's a lot of interesting opinions. Some range from, gee, it shouldn't have been in front of town meeting, and I'll address that Thursday night. And I believe it needed to be because of a broad definition of citizens petitions in our bylaws, to a whole variety of things. And so I met with the opponents and the proponents and suggested with all the intense feelings about it that we probably first think about a date certain that we'll discuss it because of so many interests of members to speak who are not town meeting members and would not be fair to expect to sit through all of the meeting waiting for when that article would come up. And secondly, I just proposed to the opponents and the proponents that we have a time limit, and they agreed to that. We will have a maximum time limit for that discussion, recommend it on Thursday night for two hours. And that will include a procedure that allows up to 20 minutes for the proponents to state their case, and up to 20 minutes for the opponents to state their case. And then since we'll have a time limit, we're going to dedicate one of the microphones for proponents to speak from, and another microphone for opponents to speak from, so that I can fairly recognize a proponent and an opponent if, in fact, they kept, keep lining up until we hit our maximum time limit, as a fair way to balance the argument in terms of time. I certainly can't manufacture speakers. If there are a number of speakers behind one microphone and not the other, we'll just continue hearing those speakers. Someone may have a question, and we have a middle microphone, and that will be designated for those that might have a question about the article. If your moderator detects a veiled pitch, either pro or for, while someone's at the question microphone, I shall interrupt them and direct them to the appropriate microphone. I believe this will be a fair hearing. It won't necessarily take two hours, but it will take no more than two hours before we go to vote. We will start with that article on Thursday night. When we finish with that article, we'll continue to our regular business until when we have this one other article, and then we'll continue to meet on Monday night. So just by way of explanation, I thought you should know that. Now I'd be happy to entertain a motion to adjourn until Thursday night.
It's moved and seconded? Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.